Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Perth East Council. This seventh day of October, I'd like to call a meeting to order. Everyone could please follow ahead for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Before we get into the meeting tonight, I'd like to welcome our new staff member we have with us. Alana, she's our new Deputy Treasurer, Asset Management Coordinator. She started her first day yesterday and is our first council meeting. She joined us from the Agriculture and Agrofood Canada. She has an advanced diploma in Business Administration from Conestoga College. She's married and a proud mom of two kids and two dogs. She enjoys yoga, biking, and a book club. And she's always looking for a new recommendation, trying new recipes, and discovering good food spots. So, welcome, Alana. I don't know if you want to say anything. Great, thank you. Okay. The agenda tonight, is there anything anyone added? No? Okay, so the agenda as prepared for October 7, 2025. Meeting of Council, the Towns of Perth East be approved as received. Moved by it, Hugh, second by Andrew, on favor. Carrie, if you have the curenary interest, you can disclose that now as our meeting goes along. Under Consent Agenda, we have nineteen items. Is there any item anyone would like to post? Or have any questions here?
Yeah, I think the mention has a long date on their agenda.
Yeah, the Friday night meal is actually on the seventh and the trip services on the ninth. So. Yeah, okay, thank you. Anyone else? If not, then we have a motion that reads that items. Five point one point one to five point one point nineteen is set out on the consent agenda for October 7, 2025. Regular meeting of council being received for information. And at the minutes of September sixteen, twenty twenty five, regular council meeting be adopted. Moved by Jerry, second by Bob, on favor. Okay. Hey, you do have some presentations tonight. We had two public presentations. The first one, we're welcoming Phil Beard, the General Manager, Secretary Treasurer of Maitland Valley Conservation Area. And with him is Andrew Fournay. He's a municipal representative for the same group regarding their draft agreement and services. So, welcome, gentlemen. Good to see you. And the floor is yours. If the red light's on, you're on.
That's additional background information regarding the people. Remembering the standing, the MCA, fair consideration. We have included a letter from the MCA's Chair, Ed McGurgen, a senior advisor counsel, considering renewing the MRC services programs for another four years. We have also included the draft MRC for council, for that BDR. It's the same as the last MRC, except we've changed the word levy to cost apportionment. The province has changed the word levy to cost apportionment, Conservation Authorities Act. We've also attached the list of services and programs that the MCA will continue with for the next four years. The changes to the programs and services from the last year. MBCA will not change any services or programs or what itself, or municipalities. Budget process will remain the same. The government's CBA's grasp of direct budget and cost apportionment will certainly be in municipalities on a basis. Phil will review services and programs that the MCA intends to continue with. And will outline which services remain for you.
All right, see if the clicker will work here first.
You can stay seated if that's.
Is that okay?
Easy, yes.
Okay. Great, so I think as council knows, Maitland Valley has fifteen member municipalities stretching from Wellington North and the east all the way over to central Huron and west. It's a very agricultural watershed, covering eight hundred and eight thousand acres of land. And just a little bit of background on the watershed. We're fortunate to live in an area that has some of the best natural resources in Ontario. We have some of the best agricultural land for growing crops and raising livestock. The Maitland River is one of the best smallmouth bass fishing rivers in southwestern Ontario. And of course, Lake Huron has some of the best beaches in Ontario for tourism and is a source of drinking water for many communities. And the woodlots in the Maitland watershed are highly valued for their hardwoods by the forest industry. These natural resources, along with clean air and a stable climate, are the foundation for our life support system and our economy. And taking that into effect to look after those resources, our vision is working for a healthy environment. So our interest is in keeping all of those natural resources as healthy and productive as possible. Now, Maitland Valley has two services that the provincial government considers to be non-mandatory services. The first is watershed health monitoring and assessment. So we monitor to understand the health of forests and rivers in the watershed. This information helps us to focus our limited resources where they can be most effective. You can't manage what you don't measure. The second service that the province doesn't consider to be mandatory is watershed stewardship. So this service is focused on providing extension support to landowners to help restore the health of forests, streams, and soil. MBCA considers watershed stewardship to be a critical service because seventy-eight percent of the watershed is used for agriculture. So we need to be working with farmers. And our focus is to help them implement stewardship practices that help keep soil and nutrients on the land and out of rivers and streams in Lake Huron. The cost apportionment support provided by our member municipalities for stewardship services provides us with stable funding to have extension staff. Without your support, we would not have the skilled staff to deliver stewardship programs such as the Huron Clean Water Project and the Wellington Rural Water Quality Program. This support keeps experienced qualified staff that landowners can trust and allows them to develop a positive, long-term working relationship with landowners, community groups, and funding partners. And also because Maitland Valley is a small organization, our stewardship staff have to provide support to other service areas such as conservation areas and flood safety. Some of the key stewardship practices that we're promoting and helping landowners with are cover crops to keep the land covered over the winter, buffering watercourses, and stormwater management. Maitland Valley provides one service through agreement, and that being the Huron Clean Water Project that's funded by the County of Huron. And our staff assist landowners and community groups with applications. We present the projects to a review committee. We inspect the completed projects and we issue payment to the landowners. The Huron Clean Water Project is delivered by a team of stewardship staff from Maitland Valley and a sawbowl bayfield. So we'll now move on to the services that the province considers to be mandatory. Maitland Valley has twenty-eight conservation areas across the watershed, representing four thousand six hundred acres of forest, floodplains, wetlands, and river valleys. And we only have three staff to look after all of those properties with the exception of the Falls Reserve Wollinash Campground. Those three staff also look after all our buildings and equipment. Many of our conservation areas are used for recreation by the public. The use of our key conservation areas such as Falls Reserve at Ben Miller, Wollinash Valley southwest of Wingham, and Naftles Creek south of Godridge has increased significantly over the past years as people have rediscovered nature and are doing a lot more hiking and walking than they used to. Maitland Valley operates two campground facilities, one at Falls Reserve and Ben Miller and one at Wollinash Park. These campgrounds are not considered to be mandatory services. Both campgrounds must fund their operations and all their infrastructure with revenue raised through user fees. So no levy or cost apportionment goes to supporting our campgrounds. And moving on to our natural hazards programs and services. They're focused on flooding, erosion, and drought. The key services include flood monitoring and emergency response, providing natural hazard planning support to municipalities, reviewing development proposals in floodplains, river valleys, wetlands, and along the Lake Huron shoreline. We also assist municipalities to obtain funding to update floodplain mapping and to maintain our flood and erosion control infrastructure. And Maitland Valley has a flood monitoring system that focuses on monitoring for intense rainfall events. We have over five hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment in the field. And this system must be monitored seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days of the year to monitor for runoff. And last but not least, drinking water source protection. This service focuses on helping municipalities to safeguard the area around their wellheads and intake protection zones. And this is the only program that's funded a hundred percent by the province. And I will now turn it over to Andrew to finish off.
The MBCA, sort of the MBCA, certainly finally deciding once we receive your support on the draft. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this matter with council. We look forward to receiving your feedback and answering any questions we have. Thank you for discussing this matter with council. We look forward to receiving your feedback and answering any questions.
Okay, thanks, gentlemen. Questions, Amanda?
Thank you so much for your presentation and thank you for all you do. And I've been to the Falls Reserve and it is very beautiful and very family-friendly. My question is, you highlighted the core programming that is mandated by the province. You also outlined that there's two programs that are sort of outside that scope. How much cost is Perth East taxpayers paying for those additional programming beyond the mandated programming?
Yeah, I can't speak specifically to Perth East, but the watershed stewardship and watershed health monitoring about ten percent of the total levy. So it's not a huge amount, but when you think about the rural conservation authorities, that's really their core services, but the province takes more of an urban view and they see conservation areas, flood forecasting, and drinking water as support. So that's why our municipalities have said, no, in our view, things like watershed stewardship are a mandatory service or a critical service in rural waterships.
Great, thank you.
Okay, other questions?
As a member of the representatives of Perth East on board of all things, so congratulate you. I think you're coming into retirement next year. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have questions? No, then we do have a motion that reads, Council of the Towns of Perth East received a public presentation from Phil Beard, General Manager, Secretary Treasurer, and Maitland Valley Conservation Authority, MBCA, and Andrew Fournay, Municipal Representative, MCA, regarding draft agreement and services for information. And that council directs staff to prepare a bylaw to enter into a renewal of programs and services agreement for twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty with the Maitland Valley Conservation Affairs. We will move in a second, moved by Amanda, second by Andrew, on favor. Carrie, and just before you run away, gentlemen, I too want to congratulate you, Phil, and thank you for all that you've done. You've given us forty-six years on the Maitland Conservation. You've helped over the years to develop a resilient watershed and changing perceptions of conservation authorities. You've worked well with all levels of government to develop effective programs and services to improve the health of our watershed. Your last day will be July third. I bet you have the days counted down. That's nine months. And we'll be working closely with members and staff with the transition. So congratulations. Thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move to, thanks again, we'll move to our next presentation. We have Bill Wilson here, the Director of Public Works, and John McCullen, Executive Director of Public Works for the County of Perth. And we also have David Perks and Matthew Buttram from Tantum Engineering. And those gentlemen are on the screen with us tonight. And we're going to talk about our road rationalization stuff. So, welcome, gentlemen, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Eggers. Good evening, council and staff. I'm John McCullen and along with Bill Wilson from the County Public Works Department. And as Rhonda said, David Perks and Matthew Buttram are virtual from Tatham Engineering to present our road rationalization process. This was undertaken in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And the objective of road rationalization is to create a municipal road network where lower-tier municipalities have responsibility for roads, mainly providing a local service where access may be more of a focus, and the upper-tier municipality having jurisdiction over roads primarily serving through traffic with increased volumes and higher speeds. The rationalization process was developed by a guiding document published by the Ontario Good Roads Association and has three components: a criteria-based assessment, a principle-based assessment, and special considerations. All county roads were reviewed under this process and all local municipalities were able to submit roads which would be considered for upload. Our intention with our presentations to the local municipalities is so that you do have a better understanding of the process for future iterations of the road rationalization. Tonight, you'll just be getting the Coles Notes version of road rationalization. But Bill and I are always available should you have any questions with roads and or this process. That being said, I'll turn it over to David Perks and Matthew Buttram, who will be providing a PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you very much, John. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present our, the Coles Notes, as John mentioned, that the road rationalization process. What we're going to do is go through this slideshow. And it's a little bit, it's a little longer, longer presentation. We're going to try and cut it down to just sort of, to meet the time restraints we've got here. We're going to start with, if we just start with the slide, unfortunately, I'm not seeing it on my screen here. A second.
It's the first slide is there.
Are you able to see it? Okay.
Yes.
Just not seeing it on my end, so. Sorry, I've got one here. If you go to slide two, study purpose. To ensure, simply put, the study purpose for this road rationalization is to ensure that the county road network is functioning as intended. That individual roads that make up the network are providing service that supports the objectives of the overall network. Why is this important? We all know there's finite resources to maintain any given road network. So it's important that the resources allocated to maintaining the county road network are in fact maintaining roads that function and support the objectives of the county road network. Next slide. And next slide, study objectives. So with the study objectives, what we have here, we need to confirm which roads should be county roads and which should be local roads. And that includes if we have local roads, it should be county and county that should be perhaps transferred to the municipality. We want to, the study wants to ensure that there's appropriate accountability to the road users. So if they're on a county road that is being maintained to county standards and serving that function and where the expectation on the municipal road is also being met for municipal level. It's to also facilitate the appropriate application of standards and practices that best suit the infrastructure. So again, county roads are being maintained as county roads and local roads as local roads. And back to resources, it's to facilitate that smart and focused spending of county funds. Next slide. The role of the county road. As John alluded to, it's quite simple. We have a hierarchy of roads. County road would be considered an upper-tier road where the function is more about mobility, moving high volumes of traffic, all types of traffic, all types of trip purposes. Where when you get into municipal roads, the focus starts to get on, it starts to be towards access to land and the properties rather than moving vehicles through. It's more getting people to where they're going in terms of on a local, local level. So access to these, to the adjacent properties. Next slide. In terms of the county's authority in establishing the road network, that's set under section fifty-two of the Municipal Act. It's just sort of some framework that the county has the authority to establish the road network and maintain, how to remove roads as necessary to and from the road system. And again, the background, this is based on a number of studies. OGRA is sort of the foundational. That's where the basic principles are. There's a number of them in here. We also looked at some other road rationalization studies that were completed for other counties. Just to get an idea of what other counties are doing, what might be helpful for Perth and to sort of design a road rationalization that's specific and tailored to Perth County. Next slide. So the basis of the road rationalization is, it's two steps. There's a criteria assessment that focuses, it's more of the number crunching. It's looking at road, specific characteristics of the road in terms of like traffic volumes, speed limits, and things like that. And it's broken down a little bit more into looking at sections of road rather than the entire road. So there's that criteria assessment that comes first. Then there's a principal assessment that is looking at more of the principles of a, of a county road network and what those principles are in terms of what the objectives are. And it's a little bit more of a high level. So we do the criteria assessment and then we overlay the principal assessment. Next slide. So we here will go through very quickly some of the criteria. So on the criteria side, these are the things that we look for in award points to a road section and based on how each of these criteria help them, help the road or, or indication that the road is serving a county function. So a county road should maintain or provide connection to urban centers, whether it's between the urban center or from an urban center to the county road network or to the provincial highway. So that connectivity within the county. Next slide. Heavy road, heavy industry service, so if it's carrying commercial trucks, we look at volumes or points awarded for that because that's, the movement of goods is, is critical to the economic health of, of any community. So we look at those roads that are, are in award points from a heavy service perspective. Barrier service, this is simply is the road helping, helping the public or motorists get across a barrier. And usually these are landmark types of things like a river or an escarpment. Next, next slide. We look at traffic speed. Again, this comes down to mobility. County roads are designed to move high volumes of traffic and they tend to be at higher speeds. And then again, traffic volumes. Again, they tended to move higher volumes than a local road would be. So there are points awarded for that as well. Next slide. Continuity both within the county and beyond the county. So it's providing continuous service within the county's borders, but also is connecting outside to the adjacent counties and their road networks because they, they come together and they help moving, they help people to and from the jurisdictions. And again, this is about mobility of people and getting them not just into the county, but also through the county if needed. Next page. And lastly, there's the, the urban bypass, which if a road, that road is serving a bypass around an urban center, there are points awarded for that as well. Next slide. So this is just a very recap of those eight criteria and the points that were awarded, whether it was, you know, zero, two, or four points for that, or if there was a scale, for instance, with traffic volume, we had thresholds in there and they would get different points for the number of vehicles that were on the road. And overall, it's for consideration from the criteria perspective of a road to be considered serving a county purpose, it would have to hit six points or greater on the scale that we've, this again is, is based on other studies that have all done that six threshold is very common. Next slide. Then we get into the principles, the road rationalization principles is a higher level look at your, at the road network. And these are the, the eight principles that were, were established. So that it provides appropriate north, south, or east, west service, it's not disjointed, that the road, in that night, it's not necessarily looking at a road section, but the road corridor, for instance. That it complements the provincial highway system and getting motors to and from the system to the road, to the built up areas within the county. That a county road should be by direct succinct, or it should be, excuse me, direct succinct and intuitive road system that is providing a high degree of connectivity both within and without the county. That it's the, provides a short, the shortest practical route is not meandering and indirect. It should not provide redundant apparel service. That's a very important point. You don't want two roads running right next to each other, serving the same purpose because you're splitting your resources to maintain two roads that could be better served if it was just one. And we don't want to extend through an urban downtown area. That's simply because the function of a road changes once you get into a downtown urban area. It's better left for the municipality in terms of land access. It's serving a very different purpose than what, what a county road would be. So the principle of that is that, that those downtown areas should be considered in, from a municipal level. And they should be capable of being improved and/or might maintain, recognizing that there are certain standards of a county road that are more, more, you know, they require more things than a local road in terms of right of way, maybe lane provision. Next page. So in terms of the principles, where the criteria, where there is sliding scales of points awarded for the principles, it was simply a, did they meet the principle or not, yes or no? And if five of those principles of the eight were satisfied, then that would be considered as a meeting a county road's objective in terms of principles. Next slide. Just a very quick review of the county road system. There are 39 county roads. We looked at, broke them down into 89 road sections, just shy of 500 kilometers. In Perth East, you have 16 county roads. In our assessment, we broke that down into 36 road sections, just shy of 200 kilometers. Next slide. In terms of the local roads, as John mentioned, we give the opportunity for the municipalities to identify some roads that they might want considered in this rationalization process that may be candidates for county roads. So overall, there are 11 roads identified, 14 sections for 78 kilometers. Perth East did not identify any, but there was one road that was identified in in South Perth, sorry, not South Perth, North Perth. It was county road, or it was Road 140, which is a boundary road with, with Perth, with Perth East, which is why it's, it's showing here. Next slide. So there are maps in the, in the report, and this is just sort of just as a quick overlay this slide of what we do. We have the existing road network. We do step one, the criteria assessment. What happens under, what typically happens when that spits out is it's, if there's some gaps in the road network, you apply the principles, it starts to fill those gaps out. And then we take it, go into our special considerations, which we'll just speak to in a couple of minutes. Next slide. So some of these results, quickly, there's, through the criteria assessment, again, when we applied just the point system, there were 22 of the 89 road sections that did not meet the criteria of a county road. So 28% in terms of kilometers of the road system were not considered meeting the criteria assessment. And that always is, that, that's not uncommon when you go through that because you're looking at road sections, you're not looking at the overall network per se. That's what comes next with the principal assessment. And in that, there was also three local roads, sections that were, were to, were meeting the, the threshold for a county road. In Perth East, we had five of the 36 road sections that do not meet the criteria. So about 16% of the, of the road system. And there were no local roads within the, the municipality that were identified for upload to the county. Next slide. Under the principal assessment, you see under the, for the overall network that that drops, once you start to bring in the principles of, okay, now we're looking at the higher bird's eye view of what the county road system needs to be doing from a principal perspective. Now we have only 11 road sections that are not meeting the criteria, and that drops down to, you know, 9% of the road system. And then there are eight local roads that were satisfying that county road, that county road threshold. In Perth East, not much changed. There is five of those 36 road sections that did not meet, again, 10% of the, of the road system. And again, the two road sections that were under principle identified for upload, that's again, Line 140. So again, that's just that boundary road that was identified by, by North Perth. Next slide. So in the, when we look at, we get to the special considerations. This is where we look at these, at the roads that are being looked at for, should they be transferred? We looked at five, there were five of the 89 sections that did not meet on a principle or a criteria that, that did not satisfy the principles for a county road. So those five road sections are noted there. But having looked at those and speaking with county staff as to what each of those road sections were serving, there was a couple, Perth Road 56A and Perth Road 147. They were identified as being, remaining in the county despite the scoring because they do serve a very specific importance to the road network and maintaining connectivity. So those special considerations were to look at these roads and say, okay, should we be dropping them or should we be maintaining them? And those two were, were identified as being maintained. Next slide. There were two local roads that met the criteria and satisfied the principles, and those were ordering Stratford, as Lorne Avenue and Oloane Avenue, that were serving both those functions that they, they are identified for, for upload to the, or transfer to the county. And again, Whalen Line also was, filled a gap if we, that was to be transferred. It filled a gap that served the county's purposes and the objects, the county road network. So that's one that wasn't even, wasn't identified otherwise for transfer, but through special considerations, and that would actually fit quite well in the, the road network. Next slide. So again, some summary slides. To maintain as county roads, there was 488 kilometers to transfer to the municipalities. There was eight kilometers through this entire process. Next slide. This is a breakdown by the different municipalities. So North Perth, these were to transfer from the county to the municipality. Perth Line 88A, in Perth South, there was Perth Road 151. And these are roads that didn't satisfy the, the criteria, weren't really serving a function. They weren't filling connectivity, they're either small or, or providing limited service in terms of what the county would, would, would look as being beneficial to the road system. And, and these are identified as being better served at a municipal level. Next, next slide. This is a transfer of roads, summary for the overall county of transfer to the county from the municipality. So those in Perth South, Lorne Avenue, Oloane Avenue, and Whalen Line were the three roads that were nine kilometers total that were identified for transfer or candidates for transfer to the county. Next slide. Again, some more summaries in terms of kilometers. We're looking at ones that are transferred to and from by municipality. Overall, there's a, there was, there was just 0.9 kilometer difference in the road, the overall county road network at the end of the day, although there was eight kilometers being transferred to and nine kilometers transferred from. Next slide. That is the, so the, the next steps follow, so you can move on to the next slide. The next steps through this, so that is the first step of the rationalization process is to actually look at the road network and identify those roads that should be transferred or should be maintained, whether it's county to municipal or municipal to county. And so we've been presenting these findings to the municipalities. This is the last presentation. So the next step is to compile feedback from the municipals, the municipalities, and provide a summary to the county council. And then the next step would be to seek county council to approve undertaking of Phase 2, which is really where we put this into practice, where we take these recommendations and we find a way of, of making these transfers happen. And then, of course, present those to Phase 2 findings, recommendations to county council. Next slide. So Phase 2, this is just sort of a, an idea of what Phase 2 might look like in terms of how these transfers might happen. There's, this is from other studies that we've, we've reviewed. There's options to do nothing, where you take the results and, and you decide that to maintain and, and just, it's essentially a do nothing scenario. Option two would be to transfer the roads and structures in their current state, transfer the roads and structures in an improved state, or transfer roads and structures with concessions. And of course, that's all part of, none of this has been considered at this point. This is just sort of an idea of what happens next. Phase 2 would also address the options for staging these transfers, recognizing that it doesn't all, it can't all happen overnight. It might take a number of years or months to, to sort of sort out how that all works. Next slide. And that's the presentation. Hopefully I've provided enough information. Of course, we have lots of question, lots of, there's opportunity for answering these questions. And so if there's anything I've missed, or, or you'd like clarity on?
Okay, thank you. Questions from members of council? Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Eggers. That's a, that's a lot of information. So I like the last page of the report, it's financial implication. So I don't really like it, some of the wording in there is real scary maybe. So what are we looking at as far as financial, like if, say, our neighbors to the north say we want 140 done, after that's ours, are they paying for it all? Or is the county going to take it on? We pay for it through our county taxes. It's, it's obviously not fleshed out yet what everybody wants, but that's a long road.
Through the mayor. Road 140 was not being recommended to, to be uploaded to the county at this time. It was identified in, in this process as meeting certainly from a principal standpoint to what a county road could be. It also offers sort of geographically a better route, if you will, but there are some considerations with that particular road where it intersects Perth Line 72 and certainly Perth Line 86. So at this time, with our current road network being, we have Perth Road 147, 131, and 121, providing that north-south service there. Yeah, just isn't being recommended for, for upload. You're very correct, though, when you say about the financial considerations. And it's something that, so we've learned through this process and through the folks at Tatham Engineering, who have undertaken this road rationalization process at some other municipalities. And that's where this process can kind of stop dead in its tracks, if you will, because of the financial implications that, that came here. I would say realistically with what is being recommended, and again, that will all be flushed, flushed out in Phase 2 if we are to proceed. I'll, I'll note that none of these recommendations have been approved by county council yet. So our, our first thing is, is to present all the local municipalities, received some feedback. And then we'll report back to county. So.
Okay, other questions, Andrew?
No, thank you again. So we have two other incorporated municipalities in Chris County, Chris County. Do you have any skin in the game for this, or early on, because we deserve them, right? Is it anticipated that, that we, they might partake and they benefit from this, or if they're not obligated to?
Through the mayor, I think this process certainly serves purpose and it's focused that the well-being and the maintenance and upkeep of the county road system is beneficial to all of Perth County and, and those coming in, out of it. And that would include our two separate municipalities being City Stratford and Towne St. Mary's. That being said, to, to the recommendations of being uploaded to the county are boundary roads between City Stratford and the township of Perth.
Okay, other questions? Any new questions? We do have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received the public presentation from Bill Wilson, Director of Public Works, and John McCollum, Executive Director of Public Works, Perth County, and David Perks and Matthew Buttram, Tantum Engineering Limited, regarding the road rationalization study for information. Moved by Jerry, second by Amanda, all those in favor? Thanks, gentlemen, a very in-depth report. And we appreciate all that you do, and we appreciate everything that you've told us tonight. So enjoy the rest of your day. Okay, so moving on, we do not have other presentations. We have no delegations. Under public meetings and public hearings, we do have two public hearings. So our first public hearing is, council will now temporarily adjourn to Citizens Committee of Adjustment pursuant to Section 45 of Planning Act. I now declare this public hearing open. This public hearing is being held to consider an application affecting property currently owned by Adam Rupp and described as Plan 363, Lot 359, Noverton Ward, 19 Williams Street, Noverton. The purpose of this hearing is to give the committee and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the proposed application and receive their input and for the committee to make a decision on the application. All persons attending this hearing will be given an opportunity to be heard or make a presentation. Committee members may ask questions for the purpose of clarifying the application, but are asked to withhold comments on this application until all present have been given an opportunity to be heard. Any person who wishes to receive written notice of the decision made by the Committee of Adjustment is asked to email their name and mailing address to the Secretary Treasurer at this time. An appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal objecting to the decision made at this hearing may be e-filed via the OLTE File Service by the applicant, the municipality, the minister, or prescribed utility providers with the Secretary Treasurer no later than the date stated on the notice. No written notice except as previously noted will be given unless requested at this time. I will now call on our planner Jeff to present the planning report and recommendations. So welcome, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yours.
Thank you. So the minor variance application, MB 13 2025, was submitted by Adam Rupp for the property at 19 Williams Street. Subject lands are approximately 0.13 hectares in size and have a frontage of about 21 meters on William Street. Lands are occupied with singly detached dwelling and an existing shed. Babkin is intending to remove the existing shed to allow for the construction of the new accessory build. Purpose of the application is to allow for the construction of that building at the rear of the subject lands. The owners are requesting an increase in the maximum lot coverage area for that structure from 7.5% to 10.6% and to increase the maximum accessory building height from five meters to 5.29 meters. And that would allow for the construction of a 141 square meter detached garage in that area. Subject plans are designated as neighborhood in the official plan. The proposed minor variance allows for that accessory garage and the structure will allow for additional storage space for the residential dwelling. The building is considered to be compatible with the rest of the residential neighborhood. The zone of the property is a residential zone 2. Accessory building is spread with a lot of coverage, a maximum 7.5 meters. The maximum building may be five meters. The lot coverage for accessory buildings is in part intended to ensure that the structures remain secondary to the main dwelling and that proper grading drainage can be controlled. Tent of the building height requirement is mean compatibility with accessory buildings of the surrounding area and to ensure privacy of those adjacent properties is also being maintained. Babkin has provided a building elevation that doesn't include any windows that would face the residential property to the north, which is closest lot line. Babkin is proposing to meet all setback requirements in the zone and the size of the structure allows for adequate drainage on the property. Rested variances will not have a negative impact on their neighboring lanes. Babkin is still able to maintain an adequate amount of many space in the rear yard and proper drainage and privacy is being maintained. Building height at the back of the property results in a building that's still compatible to Sherman Street's speed. No comments or concerns have been received from public agencies or neighboring property owners. Application for the minor variance confirmed with the official plan. Application for the minor variance confirmed with official plan policies. It means the general intent and purpose of the will be and the zoning by law and the variances are minor and desirable for the use of the land. As a result, standing is recommending approval of applications. Available to answer any questions?
Okay, thanks, Joe. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? See no one. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? Seeing no one, does the applicant or the applicant agent wish to make a presentation or speak with respect to the application? We have Mr. Ruff joining us on the screen. Mr. Ruff, is there anything that you would like to add?
Oh, no, that sounds good to me.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from our committee members? No questions. The committee will now consider a motion regarding the application. The motion is the Township of Perth East Committee of Adjustment approved application file D thirteen dash A thirteen dash two zero two five dash P E submitted by Adam Ruff for Nancy Scribe as lot three five nine, Plan three six three, Millerton Ward, Township of Perth East, municipally known as nineteen William Street as relates to number one, relief from section five point one point three to increase the maximum lot coverage for an accessory structure from seven point five percent to ten point six percent and number two, redeem the section five point one point three to increase the maximum accessory building height from five meters to five point two nine meters to facilitate the construction of a one hundred and forty-one point two meter square detached garage in the rear yard, subject to the following conditions. The first condition is that the owner remove the existing accessory structure to the satisfaction of the building department. And the second one is that the owner obtain the necessary building permit within two years of the approval of the minor variances. Moved by Jerry, second by Bob, all in favor. Karen. Okay. Our second public hearing is being held to consider an application affecting property currently owned by Donald Schlup. I'm sorry if I pronounced your name incorrect. Let's let's and and Caleb Blair and described as Plan forty-four M twenty lot twelve, Warrington Ward, seventy-eight thirty Colonial Drive, Carthage. It's all the same preamble. We're going to jump right to Jeff and Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the minor variance application M fourteen twenty twenty-five is for the property located at seventy-eight thirty Colonial Drive. Subject lands are approximately zero point two one hectares in area and have a frontage of thirty meters on Colonial Drive. The lands are occupied with the singly detached dwelling. Purpose of the application is to facilitate the construction of an accessory building to the rear of the subject lands. The owners are requesting increase some maximum lot coverage for that accessory structure from seven point five percent to eight point six percent and intend to increase the maximum accessory building height from five meters to five point three four meters. Requested relief allows for the construction of a hundred and seventy-five square meter detached shop that's going to be located in that area. Subject lands are designated as hamlet in the official plan. Minor variances will provide for the shop of this accessory to the permitted residential land use. No allow for additional storage space for the residential building. Property zoned Hamlet Village Residential HVR Zone. Accessory building is permitted with the maximum lock coverage of seven and a half percent and a maximum building made of five meters. That has provided a building elevation that does not include any windows that face residential properties to the north and to the south. Now, in his proposing to meet all zoning by law setbacks in the HVR zone and the size of the proposed structure allows for adequate drainage of the property. Location of accessory buildings at the rear of the property and allows for adequate amenity space adjacent to the residential properties. And the variances would not have an impact, a negative impact on the neighboring. That can still able to provide for adequate amenity space and drainage can be accommodated. The building elevation does not include the windows on the northern and southern elevations and privacy is therefore being maintained for the adjacent neighbors. Building height increase results in a building that will be compatible with the surrounding streetscape. No comments or concerns have been received from public agencies or neighboring property owners. Now, application for minor variance is considered to conform to the official plan policies. Maintains the general intent of the official plan and zoning by law. And as a result, we feel that the variances should be available to answer any questions?
Okay, are there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? See no one. Is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? See no one. Does the applicant or the applicant agent wish to make a presentation or speak with respect to the application? Okay, any questions from committee members? No questions. Okay, the committee will now consider a motion regarding the application. And the motion is it's a Township of Perth East Committee of Adjustment approved application file D thirteen dash A fourteen dash two zero two five dash P E submitted by Donald Schlup and Kyla Blair for Nancy Scribe as lot twelve, Plan forty-four M twenty, Warrington Ward, Township of Perth East, municipally known as seventy-eight thirty Colonial Drive as relates to number one, relief from section five point one point three to increase the maximum lot coverage for an accessory structure from seven point five percent to eight point six percent and relief from section five point one point three to increase the maximum accessory building height from five meters to five point three four meters to facilitate the construction of a hundred and seventy-five point six meter square detached shop in the rear yard, subject to the following condition, and that condition is the owner obtain the necessary building permit within two years of the approval of the minor variance. Need a move in a second or move by Amanda, second by Jeremy, all in favor. Karen, I declare this public hearing closed. Okay, you're welcome. Okay, moving on. Now we're moving into reports. First one is planning and development. We have, the first one is a consent application submitted by Andrew Phillips, Monteith and Rixma Phillips Professional Corporation for lot thirty, part lot thirty-eight concession one and part lot thirty-eight concession two of Southeast Oak Ward, which is twenty-nine nineteen Forest Road. Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the property is located on the south side of Forest Road, bounded by the CNR Railway and is municipally known as twenty-nine twenty-nine nineteen Forest Road. The lands are designated as agricultural with a natural heritage features overlay. And they are, the lands are next door that are subject to the easement are at twenty-nine thirty eight line thirty-three. And those are also designated as agricultural with that natural heritage features overlay. And they're also included with virtually significant wetland. Agricultural designation tends to preserve and strengthen the continued viability of the agricultural community. And those lands are intended to be protected for long-term agricultural uses. The natural heritage system includes woodlands, wetlands, and watercourses that are essential to the Perth County landscape and community. Subject lands are currently zoned as an agricultural zone A dash one fifty-four, adjacent land zone overlay AL one in a natural resources environment zone two, NRE two. The agricultural A dash one fifty-four zone allows for a minimum westerly side dirt setback of fourteen meters for the existing dry shed. Jason Land Overlay Zone requires environmental impact or other appropriate study to be completed prior to development or self-site alteration for any non-agricultural activities. And then natural resources zone two prevents conservation forestry maple syrup production and existing recreational trails. And this is some resources. Subject lands are occupied with an existing residential dwelling and farm buildings, and the land subject to the easement is vacant. Public notice was provided on September eleventh and no comments or concerns have been received from the public. Upper Thames River Conservation Authority has responded to regulation and they have no objections to the application. Incentive application proposes to create an easement over the lands to provide a right of way to the adjacent farm property. The rear of the farm property at twenty-nine thirty-eight line thirty-three is separated from the public road access along Perth line thirty-three by that provincially significant wetland and the surrounding woodland. The creation of the right of way with an access through the subject lands allow for the construction of this livestock barn at the rear of the property without alterations to the environmentally sensitive area. The easement would provide legal access and will contribute to the protection of the agricultural lands at rear of the adjacent property while protecting the natural heritage system on the property. The NRE two let zone portion of the subject lands is significantly set back from the area of proposed easement. And upper Thames River Conservation Authority does not have any objection to the use of the existing driveway to provide access to the neighboring property. The easement and driveway compliant with the certain zoning by law requirements and easement provides for legal access to that adjacent lines. Following the completion of the report, it was determined that the existing driveway does not need to be altered to accommodate the proposed easement. As a result, condition number four in the report is no longer required. We're comfortable with removal of that condition. Planning staff are supportive of the proposed severance subject to the recommendation. Recommended conditions have been sent approval being fulfilled and available to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Questions of the report? Hugh?
I just wanted to know reasons for the easement also for it looked like fire services. Like that was one of the reasons that having easements, fire services to get into that part of it.
And through through the mayor, their intention is to provide vehicular access to that barn on the neighboring property. So yes, you need to make sure that you'd have enough land and enough room to get fire services to the back of that property if there was ever a fire at the barn on the adjacent property. So all access to that barn will be coming through this right away easement that's going to be created.
Hey, other questions? If not, we do have a motion that Township of Perth East received the report entitled Consent Application B forty-two dash twenty-five submitted by Jay Andrew Phillips, Monteith Ritzma Phillips Professional for Nancy Scribe as part lot thirty-eight concession one, part lot thirty-eight concession two, Southeast Oak Ward Township of Perth East for information. And that council advised the Land Division Committee or its delegated authority that the Township of Perth East supports the application file B forty-two dash twenty-five subject to the following conditions. I'm going to give you the condensed version and not read everything that's here. For Perth East, we have three conditions. The first one is a letter is provided by the clerk to the township advising the Secretary Treasurer of the Land Division Committee that all the requirements for the township financial services and otherwise have been compiled with. Number two, confirmation be received from the township that the enforcement schedule for municipal drains in the area will be reviewed and updated to the satisfaction of the Township of Perth East. Number three, confirmation be received from the township that the road access to the severed and retained parcels are to their satisfaction. The county has two conditions. Number one, confirmation be received from a solicitor that the certificate of the official be scanned and attached to the electronic register of the transfer. And the second condition that the Land Division Committee be provided with a description that is consistent with the application and equal that to required for the registration of the de-transfer or the conveyance of interest in land under the provision for the Registry Act. So those conditions, do we have a mover in a second or? Move by Hugh, second by Andrew, all in favor. Karen. Okay, thanks, Jeff. Okay, with council's permission, we have Mr. DeWeard with us and we could move to eight point six building by law so that they don't have to sit through all the rest of our meeting till we get to that. So maybe they find it really interesting. I don't know. But but would that be all right? Okay, so we'll jump to eight point six building by law enforcement and I'll turn it over to Wes.
Yes, thank you, Mary. It's so the the legal access that's being provided to the area where we're going to have a chicken barn being proposed. It meets the criteria for a conditional building permit that would be subject to the the approval being finalized and put in place for the easement. So as per the Building Code Act, the DeWeard Farms meet the criteria for a conditional permit and would assume all risk in in commencing building permit. So happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the report, Hugh?
I just one question. We need a natural bylaw.
Yes, thank you for the question. So as per the section three eight, three of the Building Code Act, it requires council the entering into an agreement to meet the the criteria in section three. In the event that, you know, we didn't get the easement approved, that the DeWeard Farms would demolish the building and restore the site to its original state. So it it it's outlined in section three of the Building Code Act.
Hey, any other questions? If not, we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received the report prepared by the Chief Building Official dated October seventh twenty twenty-five entitled DeWeard Farms, Inc., additional permit for information and that council approve entering into a conditional building permit between DeWeard Farms, Inc. and the Township of Perth East. And further, that three readings be given to by law forty-three dash two zero two five being a bylaw to authorize the signing of a conditional building permit agreement between the DeWeard Farms, Inc. and the Township of Perth. Need a mover in a second or move by Jeremy, second by Jerry, all in favor. Karen. There you go, gentlemen. Enjoy the rest of your night. You're welcome. Okay, we're going back to planning and now we have the, we have Moira with us tonight and she's going to talk about our approved county official plan summer. So welcome.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, council. I'm very happy to be before you this evening to share that the county official plan is approved. The minister gave us approval a couple of weeks back and I'm here to give you a brief, I'll try to keep it brief, a brief summary of the modifications that were made to the the official plan with that that approval and his decision. So I first wanted to provide a timeline of kind of where we or how we got to where we are today. So the previous official plan, county official plan was created in the late nineteen nineties. And a review of this document began in twenty eighteen as it was recognized that it was quite outdated with current provincial policy. The following completion of background studies and public engagement, a official plan document, final official plan document, it was brought before county council in October of twenty twenty-four for their final approval. Once that approval was given, it was then submitted to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing for their final approval as the minister under the Planning Act is the final approval authority for county official plans. On September twelfth, twenty twenty-five, the county received notice that the minister approved the county official plan with a total of seventy-nine modifications. So I'm here before you to present what those seventy-nine modifications are. Before you, in the report, you'll see there is a summary table. There's also a modifications matrix attached to your report that provides a line-by-line modification matrix, these and itemization of what was amended, what was added, what was omitted, and how those changes were made. And I'm hoping to simplify that for you tonight. So I've broken out the seventy-nine modifications into the themes that are identified on the screen before you. And I will just start with the site-specific changes that were made. And so from the time that the official plan was approved by county council in October of twenty twenty-four to when we received final approval of it, there were official plan amendments approved by county council as well as by some local councils, that being North Perth and West Perth. And we wanted to make sure that those approvals were appropriately recognized in the official plan. So the minister made some modifications there to ensure that they were appropriately recognized. And that's kind of how or what this slide summarizes there. The next theme we have is agriculture. So there was multiple modifications made to the official plan kind of throughout the official plan, but focusing on agricultural designation section. The majority of changes focus on aligning the policies of the official plan with what is currently permitted in the provincial planning statement. So there were some terminology changes from mainly the additional farm accommodations. These were then changed to housing for farm workers. That's in alignment with the exact terms that's used in there. And then there was also some removal or restrictions on permissions for those uses, particularly that such uses for farm workers, they need to be located within the established farm cluster. And then clarification that those housing for farm workers can't be severed or converted into separate units under plan a condominium, plan a subdivision to try and protect and minimize the loss of agricultural land in the long term. There was also some clarifications made to permissions for farm-related commercial and industrial uses, particularly related to accessory uses and dwellings. So particularly related to accessory uses and dwellings. So accessory dwelling units are not permitted for farm-related commercial and industrial uses. They are maintained for simply agricultural uses in the agricultural designation. And then there was a emphasis on farm-related commercial and industrial uses needing to be directly related to the agricultural businesses and operations in in the area. There was further restrictions placed on non-agricultural related uses that either currently exist or are being proposed in the agricultural area, namely that agricultural impact assessments will be required for those uses to ensure that we're minimizing the loss of agricultural land. There is further expanded protection of the agro-food network. And then finally, there was further restrictions placed on lot creation in the agricultural designation, particularly that lot creation in the prime area is to be discouraged. It's not permitted for non-farm lots. That there is a requirement to comply with minimum distance separation requirements. And then further that surplus farm lots, surplus farm dwelling severances, they are to be restricted to a minimum size to just accommodate the residential use and the appropriate water and wastewater services. The next theme for you or that was made by the minister, excuse me, is related to mineral aggregate extraction. So there were some changes made to the mineral aggregate extraction section as well as the agricultural section to permit such uses of interim use. There is also clarification that all mineral aggregate resources should be protected, not just those that have a existing license hold for those operations. And then further that there are some exemptions made for mineral aggregate resources in having to provide agricultural impact assessments. And that's in line with what's currently permitted in the provincial planning statement. The next changes surround servicing and growth. The line item or the specific policy that was pulled and added in is pulled directly from section two, one, four, B of the PPS. And it just speaks to municipalities needing to maintain at all times a serviced and appropriately zoned residential land use supply. Further, there were some additional guidance added to ensure that we were appropriately planning for stormwater management to just encourage or further guide that residential land use development that's indicated in that that previous comment and modification. The next two slides, I'll say, are really administrative in nature. The changes made were done so to ensure that there's appropriate alignment with the PPS and the Planning Act that defined terms are appropriately italicized and are properly in alignment with what is currently in that provincial policy. There's permissions to ensure that there's the same permissions in our official plan that are of that of the provincial planning statement. There is a deletion of errors, appropriate numbering with the additions of policies that were added in. So simply administrative in nature, there was quite a bit of them, which is why I've outlined them for you, but I wouldn't spend too much time going going through them. They're not not too interesting. The theme of comments that is interesting, however, is the natural heritage modifications. So if you will recall, the previously approved official plan by county council, it referred to a naming of this designation as the natural environment. Now, the provincial planning speech statement, excuse me, speaks to natural heritage when referencing these features and areas. So the minister made modifications and that designation is now referred to as natural heritage as opposed to natural environment. The other change, and I'm sure you caught it in Jeff's presentation about the easement, when he was explaining the official plan and what applied, is that the designation is now split and divided into two separate two separate systems into a designation and an overlay. And I have a map to detail this further on the next slide. But you'll see that the natural heritage system, the natural heritage designation, it now only exists within settlement areas. An overlay is now used outside of settlement areas. So it'll show that there is the underlying agricultural land is the underlying land use and those are the policies and provisions that need to be upheld and maintained for existing uses. And then there's that overlay applied on top of those existing uses and those would apply as as dictated by that that designation there, but they, sorry, by the overlay and the policies within the overlay. But it's only implemented through through a planning act application. There is also further clarity placed within the official plan that nothing in the official plan limits the ability for agricultural uses to continue on lands designated agriculture. There was prioritization of provincially significant features over regionally significant features. The addition of or expansion of adjacent lands is another item that I would make note of. The adjacent lands for significant valley lands, they were modified from fifty meters to a hundred and twenty meters. And then the adjacent lands for fish habitat was modified from a hundred meters to a hundred and twenty meters. This is in line with the requirements of provincial planning statement and was modified based on the minister's requirements. There was also further modifications made to the terminology used in, I would say, throughout the official plan with the change from natural environment to a natural heritage. The requirement was then that all other references throughout the official plan needed to be modified. So you can see the page references before you on the screen as well as in your report, but that simply is is what happened. There was a Ctrl F search modification done to just change all those wording over. And here's the schedules that I that I promised you would see that indicate or illustrate the actual changes made to the designation. So you'll see on the Milverton schedule before you on the left-hand side of your screen that there is a solid dark green color. That is now what indicates the natural heritage designation. That's only within settlement areas. And then you'll look to the left side of the screen. There's the overarching land use designation Schedule B for all of Perth East. And you'll see, it's a bit hard on the screen there, but you'll see there is like a slight green overlay. It's a green hatched area and that's now what shows up as the natural heritage features overlay outside of settlement areas. There was also modifications made by the minister to further illustrate or or explain why a property might be located within a natural heritage designation or within the natural heritage features overlay. And for this reason, a detailed Schedule D and Schedule E were added to the official plan. So you'll see on the screen, it's the Schedule D, it's the image in the middle that is illustrating the it's illustrating the location of provincially significant features and areas within the county. So it shows provincially significant wetlands, woodlands, valleylands, antsees. And then on that, you can also see where the adjacent lands are located. Further to Schedule D, there's also Schedule E, which shows where regionally significant features and areas are located. And this will just allow individuals to have a better understanding of why or what specific feature is located on their property when they are referring to Schedule B that shows them either in the designation or in the overlay. So that summarizes all seventy-nine modifications. I know that seems quick, but but as I said, the natural heritage, the natural environment to natural heritage modification was one of the most significant ones. While it didn't make a change to how it should be implemented, the text and the the policy intentions didn't change behind that because there was changes to how it's illustrated. Essentially, all of our schedules had to change because it indicated it was natural heritage or natural environment, excuse me, it had to change to natural natural heritage. And then further, the addition of schedules D and E, there was schedules added for all four of our local municipalities. So those additions equated to almost half of of the modifications were made, were just done to the schedules for those reasons. But I'm happy to say that all modifications have now been made to the official plan. The official plan is now available on the county's website and it's now in full effect. Just something to note is that the Minister of Municipal Affairs' approval is is deemed final under the Planning Act. So it is not subject to appeal at this time. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, anyone.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the report? Hugh?
I know you mentioned MDS. So now if there's whatever it's an MDS is, it in the past council could change it a bit. Are you saying in the future, whatever the MDS is, that's that's fine? That's in.
Through the mayor, it's not final per se. I think before the official plan didn't explicitly say that MDS applied. And it was just making that clarification that it does in fact apply. So we would just be looking to the MDS documents on what needs to be considered. So at that time, it could be, you know, MDS one doesn't apply or council can make that modification. It was just making it clear in the official plan that that is an appropriate approach.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, Mike wants to say something.
Sorry, we're just two things I wanted to ask about and if there was a clarification that came from the province. The the creation of the inventory of service plans. So now municipalities volunteers are required to keep a tally in the service plans. Was there any guidance as to who's going to be policing that and what what the what that reasoning behind that is? It does create work from our standpoint as it relates to keep track of servicing in our service areas, all municipalities, but just us. Wondering if there was any kind of background around that requirement.
Through the mayor, there wasn't the background provided necessarily. However, my best guess and professional opinion is that the implement or the introduction of privately initiated settlement area expansions makes it so that municipalities and and planning authorities have to regularly be aware of at all times what is what development is occurring, what land is is able to be serviced. And then when we do get those privately initiated settlement area expansions, being able to justify, is it acceptable planning or or not? And do we have the capacity and do we have the land? And my assumption would be that that is somehow related to that new requirement. But but there wasn't any specific guidance given in that regard.
And the one other thing, and I cautious to even talk a little natural heritage again more because I'm sure you but the distinction between designation and overlay, I think, will be a question that's going to arise. So so I come forward with a planning application. I am in a rural property and it's an overlay property. The requirements associated with natural heritage still applies to that planning application, even though it's an overlay and not a dis. Am I saying that correctly?
Through the mayor, that's correct. The overlay and the designation do not have any difference in application, I believe. And and this wasn't shared with us by the minister, but I believe because there was concerns from the agricultural community that they wouldn't be able to continue their uses. The the text still reads that, but now it's very clear that the underlying use is agricultural and only when a planning act application that meets the definition of development and or site alteration under the Planning Act and under the PPS will those policies begin to apply.
Hugh?
Just back to the that doesn't have to be serviced, but it just land that's there that can be serviced.
Through the mayor, are you speaking to the requirement for a three-year land supply? Through the merits, it's it is saying sufficient servicing capacity is is available. Now that it it does recognize there are different ways of servicing lands. The official plan and the provincial planning statement first prioritize development on fully serviced areas. Then where municipal servicing isn't available, they prioritize development on communal private servicing. And then when that is an option, the tertiary support for development is through individual private servicing, but it would be looking at areas where there is fully service. Where there either is a plan to fully service that area or is servicing capacity currently exists. And then the other piece of that is also ensuring that the lands are suitably zoned for development and ensuring that there is a three-year supply of most ideal development lands for residential at any time.
Okay, other questions, Andrew?
Thank you, Mary. Thanks for your presentation. It looks like a lot of work. So that brings up a question. I followed the the process for the county official plan on the roll. So it was like a thirty-year horizon. So do we have the data for a three-year? And how does that come about if that's benchmark we have to use now?
Through the mayor, the province, through the Ministry of Finance, provides annual population projections. That would be used to identify what a three-year supply might look like. That is, that is a good question of of what does three years look like under the comprehensive review and what that population and and those projections? But I think the starting point is to use the tools that we have under the Planning Act, say, through a secondary plan or you know, the roads rationalization study that that the county previously presented on or servicing master plans to to appropriately stage development that we're anticipating as part of the additional lands that were added to our settlement areas long-term and and short-term.
Okay, other questions? If not, we do have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received the report dated October seven, twenty twenty-five entitled Approved County Official Plan Summary submitted by the County of Perth Planning Department for Information. Moved by Jeremy, second by Amanda, on favor. I can't thank you enough and Andrea enough and Jeff and all your team for all the work you've done. This is a tremendous project and you have done an excellent job. So thanks again.
Now on to the zoning by law.
Okay, excuse me. Moving on, we have no reports from our CIO. Under the clerk, the first one is the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule for regular meetings of council. Ashley?
Okay, thanks, Mary. It's so for council tonight is the draft twenty twenty meeting schedule. This is just in regard to the regular meetings. As council's aware, the strong mayor powers have changed the process for budget meetings. And given that next year is an election year, we won't know who the mayor is and what that budget process is going to look like for twenty twenty-seven. There is direction from council for staff to bring forward a report to consider alternate and alternate meeting schedule as well. At the same time, there was a resolution to look at comparators for council per diems. So we are planning to bring those two reports forward at a later date to consider for the twenty twenty-seven calendar year after there's a new term of council in place. If council is looking for options on the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule to change prior to them, can look at deferring this report and bring back those options sooner. We just wanted to bring forward the schedule as we're into October already to bring that draft forward. But I can try to answer any questions if there are any changes that are a little not on schedule with the first and third meeting are outlined in the report. Those are Wednesdays that fall after long meet or long counts or long weekends. And then there is only one meeting recommended in January and that's due to the holiday schedule. And then the Roma Conference, if there was a meeting that next week, then there would be back-to-back meetings between January and February. But I will be happy to try to answer any other questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the report, Hugh?
We talked about changing possible times and maybe doing some things possibly. So that will happen for next year.
I think that would be a next term that'll happen, but there will be a report come back about that before the before people can start putting their names in so that people know when the meetings are going to be.
Yeah, that was staff's understanding was to look at the twenty twenty-six calendar, keep it the same as what's been happening. And then for the next election year, bring forward what those changes are. So nomination day is May first of twenty twenty-six. So we will bring forward a report well in advance of that. So people that are considering to run for the election will be aware of the change in times if there is any.
Okay, other questions, Andrew?
For your report, so we have For your part, so we have budget, the the province has changed it for the budget now. That's great. So what's the process going to be? Do we need a meeting? Because there has to be some ability to look at the proposed budget, right? Possibly veto or whatever. I'm not expecting that, but is that is that included in this schedule? Or would that be a different format of just an email mailed out or all that work?
Yeah, it's, I can't give you a for sure answer because that is dependent on who the mayor is. Um, at this point in time for the twenty twenty six budget process of the current mayors tried to keep the process as similar to as possible to previous years. Um, through strong mayor power, the mayor can present the report and include council uh if they want to, or they don't have to, they can just present it and then the veto periods move forward. So I would anticipate after the election has happened and we know who is in the mayor position. They will look at the budget process and what they would like to see happen. And then a report would be brought forward to council if there is the need to consider the veto periods again, or um if the budget is not in place by February of the next year, twenty twenty seven, then it would fall into the standard process of council um being involved in the budget.
Okay, sounds like a bit of a scramble for the election year.
Yeah, there's, yeah, the election years adds another uh twist into it that we just don't have um the exact answers until we know who the mayor is and what they would like to do and what how they would like to see the budget uh be rolled out.
Okay, other questions? Okay, we do have a motion that council of the township of Perthies received a report prepared by the manager legislative services slash municipal clerk dated October seven, twenty twenty five entitled twenty twenty six median schedule for regular meetings of council. CLE dash two zero two five dash three eight for information. And further that the twenty twenty six schedule for the regular means of council be approved as outlined in schedule A. Move by Amanda, second by Hugh, all in favor. Okay. Okay, the next report is alternate voting methods, Ashley.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Gets uh so before you is the report for the twenty twenty six municipal municipal election, looking at an alternate voting method. Um, under the municipal elections act, section forty two, one permits municipal councils to pass bylaws to authorize the use of vote counting equipment and or authorize the use of alternative voting methods such as internet or telephone voting. Uh, the clerk as the statutory returning officer is responsible for administering all municipal and school board elections in accordance with the principles of the act, including ensuring fairness and accessibility, preserving the integrity of the process and delivering results that reflect the votes that have been cast. In the report, there is a summary, the historical voting methods, what was used and what the voter turnout was. So you'll note in the twenty eighteen and twenty twenty two municipal elections, they were held by internet and telephone voting. Uh, Perthies was uh successful in implementing the internet and telephone voting. And feedback that we received from residents was that it was um largely positive, citing convenience, access accessibility and ease of use. Um, there is always concerns that voters have as well, no matter what method is used. Some of the expressed concerns were in regard to security and accuracy of electronic systems. And then the desire to vote in person with paper ballots. Um, the secrecy for the uh software that Purvis had used last election, there was a dual authentication. So people received their ballot. When they opened up their ballot, they had a pin. And when they had their pin, then they had to enter their birth date. So there was several steps that were required before someone could cast their vote. Um, we are bringing the report forward at this point in time as there is uh a potential opportunity of councils in support of it to join um West Perth and the city of Stratford in their uh voting software company. They both have recently supported uh voting internet and telephone. North Perth has purchased tabulators several years ago, so they're still using um their tabulators for their election. And Perseth had not decided yet and Saint Mary's, I don't know what they ended up deciding for sure. Um, if that's been brought forward to them or not. Um, there are a number of factors that include voter turnout. I've outlined some of them in the report. And I have done just a rough um budgetary impact based on the twenty twenty two election costs. They came in at just around thirty two thousand dollars. Currently, the election reserve is at twenty nine thousand. Each year council sets aside approximately eight thousand to the election reserve. So we would be on track to hold internet and telephone voting again. Um, the speech three outlines if council is in support of internet and telephone voting, that we would combine it with voting places. We've done that the twenty eighteen and twenty twenty two election as well, so attending the nursing homes um to assist with voters there and then having uh a station set up in the office here throughout the whole voting period. Uh, approximately two hundred and seventeen other municipal governments are using internet and telephone voting. And the only other um thing that has changed, that's kind of significant for us is that the data that we'll be using is from Election Ontario. This is the first uh election that we're using um Election Ontario's information rather than MPAC's information. There was two recent um provincial and federal elections as people are aware of. So hopefully the database is up to date more than um previous years when we've used MPAC. It was usually quite a significant amount of changes. And I think that is all I'll say. I'll try to answer any questions if there's any.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the report, Jeremy?
So using the provincial data, does that mean that if they voted municipally before and not provincially, that they won't be on an updated list? The Ontario list or they will be?
So they should be. So the MPAC is the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. So it pulls all the information from who we have listed as owners or listed on properties. And then you have to dive into um people that are of age to vote, but are not on ownership of property. So those people usually have to come forward. They do have some other public and probably explain how MPAC works better than I can for how they collect their data. But Elections Ontario should have the um information of everyone that's voted and it's merging MPACs as well.
Okay. Yeah, the concern was if they lived here, if we're using MPAC's data and they own a property here and then suddenly they're not getting a voter card because they haven't voted provincially before. That would be a concern if they've already voted here, but if you're saying they're merging that, then that's good. Then more people should be registered or not have to register again.
Okay, other questions, Amanda?
Just more so a couple comments. Um, so really happy to hear about the elections Ontario data. It, there was a lot of, I had received a lot of comments from people um last election. Um, but I will also say that I've worked on provincial and federal elections before and their data is not a hundred percent accurate either. So just eyes wide open as we sort of go down that path. Um, I did some sort of looking into what other municipalities did last election. So a hundred and fifty one municipalities ditched the um in person voting. Uh, there was one municipality in northern Ontario, Thunder Bay, that actually offered all three. So they did in person, telephone and internet. And their um election turnout was around that fifty percent, which is quite significant. Um, so anyways, I just more so wanted to share that information um for folks as we sort of go down that path. The other comment I wanted to say is I remember I had somebody who I don't think got the information, but they were eligible to vote and they had to come to the township to do all of that. And so when we do promote things, like I think that's really important that we maybe promote more that the township office can provide assistance uh whatever direction we decide to go as a council. So don't have a preference either way, just more so wanted to share that information from what I looked into about what other municipalities did last election.
Okay, other questions, Andrew?
Thank you, Mary. Gets uh suffering through the uh seasonal allergies or whatever is going on here. I apologize, my voice is a bit less. So I I'd plan to speak on this a little bit. I think I spoke on the last time. Um, that I've had a few people who come up to me and said, hey, I'm not really tech savvy or whatever. And then I said, well, there's help at the uh the fire hall, right, which is a good thing. I know a few people used it. Uh, one case, um, it was uh some of my neighbors who were eighty plus. Um, they voted in every election they were eligible to. And um, yeah, they're Mr. Right, so I ran over there and it was almost door closed. And I said, did you vote yet? They said, no, we're not going. It's too much hassle. Even to get to the fire hall, you're eighty, right? So there's many stories like that and I was gonna dive a little deeper into that until I found this article on the CBC News, October second. Uh, it, uh, there's a new study that suggests integrity of online voting in the twenty two, twenty 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 two municipal elections could have been undercut by two fundamental security flaws that have left seventy percent of the municipal elections at high risk of compromise. And I'm reading from some notes on here just so I get it correct. And it's our trusted news voice, CBC. It's not Rebel News. It's not uh social media news at CBC. So this research is conducted by a group of academics from Brock Carlton and Western University, Western being obviously an Ivy League university. They all special, all of them specializing in computer engineering, cryptography and political science. So they found severe flaws in logistics and technology. I would say the mail system, our current mail system is probably a logistic issue, right? How does he get a Christmas present or whatever? But uh, so it's good for them to pick that out. Yeah, two security uh failures. The first is the logistical flaw. And there's possibly a discarding voters through uh uh unique PIN number and invitation to fraud. So there's some type of way that they found, and I'm not sure what system or what company it was. Maybe we use them, maybe we don't, but it seemed to be seventy percent of that two hundred and nineteen uh municipality seems to be a large number. Um, having said that, the major municipalities like Toronto, Ottawa, they don't use it. They use a polling station. So basically a lot of municipalities do, but probably the majority of the population of Ontario does not use online or telephone voting. So uh, the other system uh was a technical vulnerability found across multiple vendor systems that risk secretly hijacking up to a million online ballots on election night. So again, this is CBC. Um, articles continue that uh many larger municipalities I just said, such as Toronto and Ottawa, as writing of this uh October second, do not uh offer electronic voting. So that's majority of Ontario's pod. Um, so the researchers stumbled onto a problem after a senior official from a rural Ontario municipality described it depend uh the potential security risk in a high volume rural post office noting that voter information letters containing their pins are being thrown into the junk mail. Like when you go to the Shakespeare variety, people just look in their mailbox and I'm not carrying that home and they're into the blue bin, right? So that's something I didn't realize, but that's not good because those people, well, maybe they didn't want to vote. We only got thirty percent turnout. So with the, you know, this postal service complications, which seem to come well likely kind of less things are resolved with that uh that group um next year at election time, right? Or or previous, that seems to be when they do it, you know, um. Uh, you know, we have issues with post office, you know, the Ellis train issue. It was a postal related that they didn't get their their uh their information until the night of me meeting. And then obviously the service disrupt uh disruptions. So, you know, two hundred and nineteen municipal clerks have to spend their time to procure their own systems. Find the costing, maybe get together and group things, hopefully save some money. Uh, but yeah, the province still doesn't have any concrete uh security or um uh standards for municipal elections. The feds do it by paper, province doesn't by paper. So where are we doing it by paper, especially when there's no provincial standard? They're they're our boss. So it's not we, we bow to that that will. So, you know, I I'd like to move that uh we could bring back some pricing for the next discussion for traditional voting method. And uh, go from there for the twenty twenty six municipal election.
I'm gonna ask if anyone else wants questions and then I'll come back to you. Anyone else have any comments? So, Jerry?
Yeah, thanks for the mayor. Um, it's proven to the twenty eighteen, twenty twenty two election is the best way to go. He could be in tech savvy or not. We have the help like every polling station that the province and the fed should be going this way. This is so simple, so easy, so reliable.
Okay, anyone else? If not, then I'll go back to Andrew and what is the motion that you wish to move?
Uh, clerk, bring back pricing for voting method. And to cap the council of Perthies not pursue alternative voting message for the twenty twenty six municipal.
Okay. Ashley's writing that up. Do we have a second or?
I have a question.
Sure.
Um. The wind staff go and should pending council's decision, would they look at having a full station at every ward? Or how would that? Because I think the costing would vary depending on how many stations you have, right? So I would like to see some analysis into that, right? Like I, if we were to go down this route, speaking for residents of Ellis Ford and maybe others, like it shouldn't just be a full station in Milverton. So that's just my only thing that I'll sort of say. Um, because when we're asking staff to do that, they could look into, because there's going to be resources. Should we go down that route? Uh, which is fine if should council decide to do that. But I just think there maybe needs to be a bit of perhaps clarity in what we're asking staffs to do, because I think that that there's going to be some variability and in costing. Just a suggestion, just wanted to put that out there.
You have any comment? So the intent is to have a ballot or a polling station in every uh ward, correct? Okay, so we have the motion that uh moved by Andrew, second by Hugh, that we receive the report for information, that we direct staff to bring back pricing on traditional voting method and that council not pursue alternate voting method in the twenty twenty six election. This, pardon? Andrew and Hugh.
I just have, sorry, I have a question. The second part of that.
That we do not pursue alternate voting. Was that part of your motion? But it actually, to me, is two different motions.
That's what I was just gonna say.
You want, you want traditional and then you want not to pursue. But if traditional doesn't get passed when it comes back, then you've already vetoed doing something else. So it really should be two motions.
Like, should it not be asked staff to bring it back, report on costing? Then we see the analysis, then there'd be a motion on what direction we would do. Because I'll be honest, I'm in favor of looking into the costing. I'm not necessarily in favor of the way it's the second, like together at this time. So that's just, I think that we should have the information before we make the decision.
So it's your motion. What do you want to do? So you want to leave the motion as is, is what I'm asking. Okay, all right. So then the motion is that we uh have staff bring back uh pricing on traditional voting method and council not pursue alternate voting method in twenty twenty six. So everyone's clear? Okay, all those in favor? And opposed? Good.
Hey, councillor Smith?
Yay.
Councillor McMillan. Councillor Broadhagen. Councillor McAlpine. Councillor Matheson. Deputy Mayor McDermid. Mayor Agates. Okay, so two yay and five nay, so that is defeated.
All right, Jerry?
I'd like to move the recommendation down in front of us.
Okay, so the recommendation is that council township of Perth East receive a report prepared by the manager of legislative services slash municipal clerk dated October seven, twenty twenty five entitled alternate voting methods, twenty twenty six municipal election. CLE dash two zero two five dash three nine for information that council approved the use of internet slash telephone voting as an alternative voting method in the twenty twenty six municipal election being held on October twenty six, twenty twenty six. And that staff be authorized to execute any agreements necessary to implement internet slash telephone voting. And that the clerk be directed to prepare the necessary bylaw authorizing the use of internet and telephone voting in accordance with section forty two, the Municipal Elections Act nineteen ninety six. So Jerry is moving. Do we have a second or? Bob? Comments? Andrew?
Yeah, it would be prudent to at least get a costing for the traditional voting method at this point. So I'd like to make an amendment that we, we add that to, to the clerk to proceed with the costing of of uh, traditional voting methods. Will obviously delay the implementation of the first part, but.
Okay, so Andrew wants to amend that we still get costing for the um, paper voting, correct?
I believe that's what the council wishes, wishes were to get the costing separate from the actual decision. So we're just doing the same thing just in this vote. So we're still gonna have to defer the vote.
Just, just hang on. Hang on. Okay, so Andrew is moving that. That's fine. You're moving it? Who is seconding it? I'm in charge, thank you. Who is seconding the motion of the amendment? Who is seconding the amendment? Hugh? Don't tick me off. Okay, so we have an amendment. First, we vote in the amendment. Then we vote with the, if that passes, we vote with the original motion. If it doesn't pass, we just vote in the original. So I'm correct in my questions?
Clarity and then a comment, if I may. If, if the, another council member, so there's a move, there's a motion on the floor. If we do an amendment, doesn't the mover and the seconder have to agree to the amendment? They don't have to. Okay. So I just have a comment, not to stir things up. I was very much in favor in getting the cost analysis. And then coming back and just in deciding. The way that this currently, it's, it's basically, we're doing the same thing as the other vote. The original intention was to vote for phone and, and online and then get the costing. So it, you're, it doesn't make sense to me because if it went through, say hypothetically, council voted for the, it would be a moot point, basically. Right? Is what I'm trying to get at. What I was trying to do in my comment originally, like earlier, before we voted last time, was to just get that one thing pulled out. But the mover and the seconder didn't want to do that. And so now we're in a weird situation because people are trying to make a point. And it doesn't make sense. So I'm just, all I'm saying is logically, from my perspective, hypothetically, the way it reads or will read with the original motion and the amendment, it would be a moot point should, should we, should it pass, is what I'm trying to get at. So I'm just trying to, I think it's always helpful to have more information so we make good decisions. I did a little bit of research, as I mentioned earlier. I think more options is great when we talk about accessibility. I think it would be nice to have some in person. I agree that that's helpful. I didn't really hear a lot of issues with the way things were done before, except, you know, maybe somebody got a card that hadn't, like a son or daughter, whatever, that hadn't lived there, right? Um, for whatever, however many years. So I just wanted to put that out there, just uh, I'm struggling with supporting this because of the way it's grouped together. So I'm just, I'm just trying to put that out there for discussion. That's my, that's where I'm struggling here. And I think that we need to, instead of, I know people are trying to make a point. And maybe people are trying to launch their next campaign platform, whatever, that's fine. But I just think that it'd be better to have all the information before we make a decision. That's just my suggestion. So I'm just putting that out there.
Well, you are correct in your analysis because if the amendment goes through and so does the motion, the motion is to do it by alternate voting and council staff will bring a report back of what uh, paper ballots will, would cost, but that doesn't mean the voting, it will change because if the other motion passes. Jeremy?
So.
But then you have there would be a reconsideration that would have to come back from someone from the prevailing side. Is how it would work. So just so everyone's aware of it. Amanda had some good points on that. I guess why we had asked, make sure that everybody was okay with what we did the last motion. And, and that you're okay, what's gonna go forward? Andrew?
I was just gonna, obviously there's reconsideration within one year. Um, so that's something else, who knows, it might be less. Maybe do some reading after this great discussion and wow, we should just roll her back and so.
Okay, so we do have an amendment. That's we're gonna vote on first. So the amendment is that the clerk be direct, be directed to prepare a costing slash pricing of traditional voting method for the twenty twenty six election. We're gonna vote on the amendment first. Jerry, you have a question?
No, a comment?
Okay.
Comment on the higher cost. It's estimated that thirty one thousand. Kind of close to what it was in twenty twenty two, perhaps a little bit of a situation with the ultimate, the ultimate voting. I'm probably going to be closer to forty thousand on the staff time. I probably give you a good guess, probably gonna be between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars to go with an in-person vote. We only have eleven thirty thousand in reserve. We're gonna have to go to the taxpayers.
Okay, so we do have the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? Who's opposed? Defeated. Then we'll go back to the original motion. And the original motion was moved by Jerry, second by Bob. And that was to use uh, an alternative voting method for our election. Authorized to execute, implement internet and telephone voting and that we prepare the bylaw. That's synopsis, Amanda?
Sorry, just wanna get some clarity. Should we move this motion? Would there still be an option for in-person voting or just be like, it would be only at the township office? Or, cause like, I'm just trying to get a sense of if we move that, it would be the exact same as last time where internet, phone, and then if there is tech issues, people would go to, would we still offer like the stations or whatever, like what, I'm just trying to get a sense of what that would look like.
Yeah. Um, if council goes with this direction, I would anticipate we would mirror what we've done the last two elections, which is having stations set up at each of the fire stations, uh, the nursing homes at the library and then through the whole duration, the township office during working hours. And then the in-person were throughout um, the voting period. When we say in-person voting, that means people still bring the card that they have, or if they didn't receive one, they come and they can register when they're in person to get their PIN number. And then there's uh, computers or if they want, if they're more comfortable to use their own phone device, but there's staff that would be there to assist them in voting. So it's not voting in person on paper. It's voting in person, still using either internet or telephone, but staff will be there to assist if needed.
Okay, anyone else before we follow the motion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Here. Okay, uh, the next item is section seventy eight, report on the municipal drain.
Okay, thanks Mayor Agates. Uh, this is just an initial request for um, works to be completed in the Ellis Ward.
Point of order, Mayor. Um, I'd still like an apology for the member from uh, Milverton blurting out in the middle of the conversation directly at me. Just a simple apology so we can continue.
Through the mayor. Simply stating that you have mentioned with all of council, I wanted question.
Well, actually, as if we want to banter, would you allow us to go back and forth a bit or no?
I apologize.
I appreciate that. Thank you, councillor Smith.
Okay, um, so this drain is in the Ellis Ward. There's two property owners that are looking to have the municipal drain upsized. Um, so council is just seeing this, if they're in support, will send a letter to the conservation authority and then an engineer would be requested to be appointed at the November eighteenth council meeting.
Okay, and to any questions of the report? Seeing no questions, we do have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received a request for repairing improvement. Section seventy eight of the Drainage Act, a property owner, Pete the Nineattan, with a municipal drain, law fifteen, concession three, Ellis Ward, township of Perth East for information. And further, that in accordance with section seventy eight of the Drainage Act, the appointment of an engineer, excuse me, will be considered at the November eighteenth, twenty twenty fifth regular meeting of council subsequent to the notice advising of the proposed drainage works being sent to the secretary treasurer of the conservation authority that jurisdiction over the lands in the affected need a mover and a seconder, move by Hugh, second by Amanda, all those in favor? Okay, we have no reports from finance, nothing from public works. We did building report already. Parks and recreation, nothing, nothing from fire. We're down to correspondence. The first item of correspondence we have is from Angie Hurst out of the ashes, large animal rescue. She has sent us some information. Is there any questions anyone has in any of that? If not, Jeremy? Correct, it was, it was attached to your agenda, so.
Thanks. Um, in the past, we've uh, looked into complaints internally, so our own staff have investigated. We've also requested assistance. Yeah, it's uh, it's not a going further.
Okay, another comments? If not, we do have a motion that council of the township of Perth East receive a correspondence from Angie, got in Angie first, first out of the ashes, large animal rescue regarding protecting animals and our community from the date of personal fireworks for information. We have a mover in the secondary, moved by Jeremy, second by Hugh. All those in favor? And then the second item, we have uh, some correspondence with Marilyn Fish uh, from Lisbon. They've had some speeding issues down there. I sent it to Jake. He uh, took our little machine out there, you know, that tells him what he'll pass for one. And I think that slowed people down. Jake, do you wanna add anything to the report?
Sure, through you, Mayor. Um, so we did take one of our radar devices down there, as you mentioned. Um, but the intent was not to leave that there permanently. We also did take our our other device down there, which captures traffic data, just to get a sense of, of what was really going on. And we did do a week of data in early August. And we saw an average uh, vehicle speed of about sixty five. So that said, the permanent uh, signage that, that the writer of the correspondence has requested, you're, you're looking at um, just under five thousand for a permanent installation. So I think I would caution council a little bit around setting a precedent. There's certainly other areas which you could uh, make a case that are comparable. But these, these can be effective, uh, but there are a lot of small settlement areas within the township to consider. And also mentioned in the correspondence, OPB was made aware. So hopefully that has improved things as well.
Okay, thanks Jake. Just so, oh, go ahead.
So thanks to the mayor. There's a couple of areas where we had a donation. Finance club, perhaps purchased them. We moved them around, they turn it, we moved them. So maybe perhaps there's a chance here for animals. We can get a fundraising to be the same, if not as big of a, big one, but a smaller version.
Okay, anyone else? Hugh?
Uh, yeah, I, I talked for a moment and um, unfortunately, there are the ends of the world and the OPB doesn't know when they exist. They have never been there and they've never filled out. And that's somewhat concerning for the money paid by the OPB. But they had a few other things that they would look at and also in the team, you know. They're just uh, some things like uh, at the stop signs, painting a line on the road because it said people come up and they don't even, like there won't be a stop sign there, but they just don't stop. We're just kinda going out. And possibly a sign ahead, um, saying, you know, there is a stop sign up uh, up ahead. They should really love one of those signs because they did say that it seemed to control traffic, not all of it, but not some of it. The road seems to be gaining a lot of use from heavy trucks, especially a lot of feet trucks from eating uh, down by New Henry, there's stuff like that, things in that road. And other than that, they, they did say the, the road and the soul of the one that was trying to prepare the uh, to push that. I'll say, you know. And uh, did you feel the city, whatever the data you got?
Hey, anyone else? Well, just to add to it a little bit, the county here before, county has put these speed vices on our little handbooks, like water, rock, stock. Anything that was on the county road to see what would slow the traffic down. And when I come out of North Urban, these cars coming at me, I always look in the mirror and they're always bright. Cause it flashes red and then gradually they're gone. So they, they are effective. I don't know if you want staff to look into how many we would have to put in, just to have an idea, how many we'd have to put in or how many places, you know, there are like this. just to have an idea, how many we'd have to put in or how many places, you know, there are like this little community. I'm not saying that we need to put it into them all, but there might be some, like this one or a few others. Maybe we have to come up with criteria, maybe we don't want to do, do anything. I'm not very sure, but just so you know that there are. That's how the county ones came. They brought us reports. So I think these should be something that we would implement and, and county.
I think, yeah, through, through the mayor, in order for us to determine how many vehicles are on the road, we're gonna be looking at basically doing data capture for all those sections to get up to the information. There's certainly gonna be some staff input there. We certainly can.
Bob?
I think this letter is similar to same one sixty-seven. Lot of traffic, lot of noise, speed, cave. Hydrate speed, and that's the norm, right? Travel this area, whether it's line forty-seven, line forty-five, one of, one of three, just shuffle my head around. I have seen the O P P on numerous games on. You want three? Our little region police, it's just up the road from me, people. I'm surprised he hasn't started his own petition because he told me he was on the corner this week. So again, I think condition of road may just still keep it down a little bit, but it's pretty common. And so the rotation of the device, I think, works well, put it up here and there in the different areas. So I asked where I needed. Save everybody's vision of what the road needs to be like. I'm on gravel road, I see a lot more traffic than what you're speaking of. Higher, higher speed volumes, that's just the moral of it. More means rather than other roads that someone would be talking about, but I don't think we can make this happen. That's the situation so far. Communicate with our staff.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Agates. So whenever someone outside of the area comes to my place for going to dinner somewhere up that way, GPS always takes right through this area exclusively, doesn't matter how windy it is, up and down. Now, I know we talked about it in line twenty-nine, a million years ago, about how the GPS works and if there's any way municipality or can find, you know, do something to make that less attractive for a GPS route. I don't know if that's a thing, but it's, would solve a lot of problems in general. If we can shuffle people to main, main roads, because I'm pretty sure revenue speeding problems, it might be local, but.
Yeah, through the mayor, that's certainly not something that I'm aware of, that, that we can do. Google's a fairly big enterprise and I don't think we're gonna have a lot of say in, in what people elected, what roads they elect to drive. Yeah, I think a lot of people just look at, they just look at the maps themselves, whether it tells them to go that way. They're gonna learn shortcuts. I know myself, going up to the cottage, which ways can I get there shorter? And I think everybody's doing that with, with, you know, the use of Google Maps now. So I think that's just gonna continue.
Yeah, I think it's more of what can a municipality do to, to upset the algorithm, right? One stop sign, one, one lower speed area. I, I think that's the way it goes and, and that would be nice if we could look into that or.
Okay, any other questions, comments? We have a couple of choices. We can just receive it for information or we can receive it for information as staff to bring in. So what, who wants to move one? Bob? Okay, and we have a seconder? Carrie? Okay, so the motion is that Council of the Township of Perth East receive the correspondence from Marilyn Fish regarding speed in Lisbon for information. All favor? Opposed? Okay, moving on to council and committee reports. We have my meeting log, where, what I did for the month of September. Over now, any questions where I was or what I did? Nope. Okay, council reports. Anyone have a committee report, any of the committees they sit on? Nope. Okay, then we're down to, oh, I need a motion to accept my meeting log. Move by Jeremy, second by Hugh, all favor? Carrie, we're down to bylaws. We have four bylaws. I have first, second, third, and final reading. The first one is bylaw forty-three, twenty, twenty-five, bylaw to enter a conditional permit with the New Weird Farms, Inc. And that was eight point six point one tonight. Bylaw forty-four, twenty twenty-five, a bylaw to appoint a building inspector. And a third one, bylaw forty-five, twenty twenty-five, a bylaw to appoint a deputy treasurer. And the last one, bylaw forty-six, twenty twenty-five, a bylaw to proceed prescribe the rate of speed along line sixty-seven. So I need a move in the second here for those four, first, second, third, and final readings. Moved by Hugh, second by Jerry, all favor? Carrie, we do, do we have any notice of motions? Any other business? Any announcements? Amanda?
Just wanna take the opportunity to thank the mayor and council and particularly Bill Hunter for their support for the recent passing of my dad. Bill was there when it happened and I just want to thank you so much. It means a lot to me that we have such amazing staff and support. So sorry, guys, but I just want to thank all of you guys for being there for me.
Thanks, Amanda. Confirmatory by. One of that bylaw forty-seven, that's twenty twenty-five, being a bylaw confirmed proceeding to council, township of Perth East at its regular meeting, be held October the seventh, twenty twenty-five. You read a first, second, and third time. Moved by Hugh, second by Bob, all favor? Carrie, and the last motion of the night is we turn at nine twelve or nine eleven PM. Moved by Hugh, second by Amanda, all favor? Carrie, thanks, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your night.